When it starts, I like.
You need.
I wasn't.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order at 4:01. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Okay, excellent. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a, it's a work-study session tonight. We have a pretty small agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll move it.
Okay, Mr. Thomas? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Pelley? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries seven, zero. Now, public comment. As required by the Brown Act Government Code, Section 54956, at special meeting study sessions, member of the audience may only address members, address the Board of Education on items that are agendized. Do we have any blue cards?
We don't have any public comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we will get moving. Do we need just a minute?
Just want to make sure the PowerPoint's ready to go.
Okay.
So, good afternoon, Peggy Lynch of Leadership Associates. I'm excited to be here. We're going to turn it to Dennis. As well, it talks about the topics we're going to cover. Dennis, I'm going to turn it over to you. Dennis, Dennis, we're going to turn it over to you.
Oh, you ready to go?
Yep, we are.
All right. Good evening, Board members, President Erickson, and the remainder of the board. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm sorry I couldn't be there personally. But just circumstances didn't allow for me to do it, and I appreciate this opportunity. I'm the lead search partner for Leadership Associates, and we really want to thank you for the opportunity to, to serve you and honored to support you in what truly is your, your number-one responsibility, to, to hire an outstanding school superintendent. We want to be a part of that. My background is, I was a superintendent for 26 years, and 12 of them right next door in Placentor Belinda, but also Irvine and in Laguna Beach. And so I, I think I know the district well, and, and then subsequently, we've had a chance to work with many of you. Trustee Vane and Thomas, you're the only two that I haven't had a chance to meet, and congratulations on your, your election to the board. And there are seven outstanding individuals on the Orange Board, and it's been a pleasure over the years. We actually helped with the original search to brought, they brought Gunnrey Hansen to the district five years ago, and then worked with the board over the past four or five years. So have some degree of familiarity, and again, we're, we're very pleased to be here. I'm going to be joined by two outstanding individuals, Peggy Lynch, and she'll introduce herself, and Dr. David Verdugo, he'll introduce himself, and then we'll give a little introduction to the whole search process. Also, Dr. Beckler, who I know many of the board members know, will be helping with a lot of the recruiting and behind-the-scenes work. So in essence, the three of us will be on the front line, and then Dr. Beckler will be also supporting on the search. So Peggy, you want to go ahead and give an introduction to yourself and David? And David can do his, and then I'll, I'll kind of give the overview of the PowerPoint.
Great, thank you, David. Dennis, so Peggy Lynch, been with Leadership Associates since 2009. I have done probably 90 searches over those years. I spent seven years, almost seven years, in San de Gito Union High School District as superintendent, seven years in Brao Linda Unified School District as superintendent, and prior to that, I was next door in Tustin Unified for 24 years. And my husband started his first teaching job at McPherson Junior High. So I have a little bit of connection to the district over the years, and I'm really excited to be able to participate in the search with you. Dave?
Thank you, Peggy. Thank you, Dennis. David Verdugo, senior partner with Leadership Associates. I've been a senior partner now for about 10 years. I have probably accomplished maybe between 50 and 60 searches. I'm the former and retired superintendent of Paramount Unified School District in Los Angeles County. I was there for 10 years. Former assistant superintendent of schools in Placentor Belinda, and also 22 years in the El Rancho Unified School District in Pico Rivera, where I grew up. Following my retirement, I was selected as the executive director of CALSA, the California Association of Latino Superintendents in Sacramento, and I held that position for six years, as well as working out of Washington, DC as the Leadership Academy Director, where I really had the opportunity to mentor and coach aspiring superintendents across the nation. And I'm one of four of our bilingual partners, and certainly that, of course, is an important factor when you are relating to the stakeholder input process that takes place. So an educator for about 45 to 47 years, I believe. Thank you.
Excellent.
We're going to turn it back over to Dennis, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
And we're all educators now who are doing this professional work, both governance workshops and training with aspiring leaders and, and searches. So we'll go ahead and get moving, moving, and just kind of give a brief overview, because this is going to be an interactive session, really designed to, to, to receive your input. So Peggy, or whoever's moving the slides, if you could go to the next slide.
We're on Linda Harder, starting with Linda, yeah.
On the support staff?
We're on that, Dennis.
Oh, you are on that, okay. As you can see, the three ladies, actually four individuals there, we're one of the few firms that, you know, have support, and so for, for Karen, Linda Harder will be directly working with your administrative assistants, the superintendent's administrative assistant, in, in handling all the day-to-day operations of, of things that are important, postings and so forth. So we want to take as much load off as possible. Linda was the former executive assistant to superintendent in Fullerton Joint Union High School District, just retired two years ago. So we have a good complement of behind-the-scenes staff members that help to support the search. Next slide? This slide just, and you can put them all up, David, if that's okay, or whoever is controlling that. You know, we are a partnership, which means we're not consultants, people who just come in and do searches. The work we do is, is, things are important to us. We really believe that quality education is important for our democratic society, and getting a great leader has a huge impact, as, as this board well knows, and every student and staff member deserves a really passionate, caring, inspired leader of their school district. And, and those values that we have, we worked hard on those, and I, I think, actually, they're pretty consistent with Orange. Integrity, equity, excellence, diversity, inclusion, accountability, and transparency. And you'll see that in our, our work. Next slide, thank you. You know, it's important that, you know, when you look to a firm, what's their track record? And we just put up a few, but, you know, we do the majority of searches in California. We did the Orange search with Dr. Hanson, the recent Tustin, Newport, Saddleback, Irvine, Los Al, Fullerton Joint, Fountain Valley Centralia, Buena Park. But those are just a sampling. I just chose, we chose some local districts, but we work across the state, and the next slide will help to show that. But that just shows some of our impact locally. When, when you look at the three of us, you can certainly look at the two, two of Peggy and David, and of course myself, you're joined, we're joined by 22 partners across the state. They help us with identifying quality leaders and making contacts for us. And so it's not just the three of us or the four of us with, with, with Dr. Beckler, but there's 22 people. We, we meet twice a month over the phone on Zoom calls to talk about our searches and our leadership development. So we've got a, a strong group of cadre of leaders across the state to help support us in our endeavor, but the three of us will be working directly with you. The other piece to a good search is, well, who do you know? I mean, we, we are very well-connected across the state with county offices and superintendents, and, you know, Peggy and David both do aspiring leaderships, but we also have close connections with the California School Boards. We're a Silver Affiliate, the only one. You can see AXA, Latino superintendents. David was actually the, the executive director, as he said, and also at the national level, the African-American superintendent's group, Asian Pacifics. And you can just kind of go through that. And so we stay connected with those organizations, and that's important, because we don't know where this next leader's going to come from, and we want a, and I know what you want. We will hear that, I think. I think I know, because we've worked with you in the past, a diverse group of candidates to choose from. And, and that's going to be our, our number-one priority, or one of our top priorities, that's for sure. Next slide? So this, and I won't spend a lot of time on this because, but it's important. This is your search. It starts with you, it ends with you, and the starting is today, to get, to get your input, to find out what you're looking for in, in, in a new superintendent. We have a very long agenda. The next part, and you chose, you know, the board, you had a good debate on this. You do targeted search, you do a full search, and, you know, what we call traditional search. And you said you wanted to really reach out to your educational partners, and so we're going to do that. We're going to talk about that today, too. Who do you want us to meet with? The principals, teachers, classified, ELAC, DLEC, confidential, you know? And so you're going to let us know city leaders, cabinet, and so forth. So we're going to gather that input, and it's going to be similar to the input we're going to gather tonight. We're going to ask them really, really precise questions. And then from that, we collect information and collect data that helps to give you information on what, what we've heard is important to, to those leaders, and we also do an online survey, and we'll talk about that. And then it's our recruitment, where that's, that's really, to be honest with you, that's what, that's, that's our bread and butter. That's why we're here. We, we recruit. Personal outreach, it's not passive outreach. I mean, certainly we'll do some of the publications, but it's picking up the phone, it's contacting people we know and say, this is a great opportunity. You know, we want people not that want to leave something, but want to come to something special. And then the final, not the final phase of it, but basically it is, is the presentation of candidates. Important to know, you see everyone. We open up, we will have done the vetting on every single person. We would have really gotten all the background. You know, we've never seen a, a, a reference letter that wasn't a good letter, right? Only people only put good letters in there. We make the calls to those people that we know, know that individual, not just who they say we should contact, and then we share all that with you, and then you decide who you want to interview. We'll give you an open portal to the entire group of candidates. We usually group them into candidates we think are, are kind of made different tiers that match up with the position description, but you choose, you know, who you want to interview, and then we assist in terms of coordinating the interviews, et cetera, but you're conducting the interviews. We're there, kind of moving traffic back and forth and, and assisting as we can, and then you make the final selection. Any, maybe I'll just continue to go through this rather than ask any questions, because there'll be plenty of time to ask questions as we go through. So the next slide, if we could?
We're there.
So I, I guess this is really it, and then we can open it up for any questions, or just begin. Just, it's your search, it's broad-based, it's high-tech. The team, I mentioned the, the individuals that are working behind the scene full-time. And this third bullet's important. 66% of the individuals selected by school boards where we were led to search were women or persons of color, and we're proud of that. Also, 85 to 90% of the superintendents are there for five years or longer. And then we're experienced California firm. No one's more experienced in California than we are, with a strong statewide reach, and also a national reach. We bring in national candidates, too. Again, that's, we vet those, and it's up, up to you, but primarily, 85 to 90% of the candidates are, are California-based. Let's say 85% are probably California-based, and then, and we're passionate about our work, and I think you'll, you'll see that in, in the, the work that we do together. So thank you for the opportunity to spend a few minutes, and, and David and Peggy are going to really help to facilitate this next part of our, of our agenda. And so we can turn this off, or if there's any questions that, you know, you'd like to ask now, we can do so. So President Erickson will turn it over to you for any questions, or to begin on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That was a very, very informative opening, and does anybody on the board have any questions about what's been presented so far? Okay. Thank you. Obviously, I think one of the questions I have is just looking at 85% staying five years or longer is pretty impressive, and what do you think is, I mean, what's your secret with that? Because that's a, that's a very good percentage.
I think what it is, is we don't, you know, sometimes people say, oh, I really want to come to Orange, but the, the issue is, what's your real motivation? What do you want? And, and we look at their background and sort of their track record, and so I think it's trying to get the right match, because a lot of people think they can be superintendent of a district like Orange, but, you know, really, it's trying to get the right connection with what their values and culture is. And so if, if we've done a good job of bringing four, or five, or six great candidates, and then you'll do a good job of selecting, then we find, okay, we've, we've matched them up, not just trying to get numbers, but trying to get people who really are passionate about Orange. And I've been in the county since the mid-'80s, so I, I know Orange is, is a great district. You've had your ups and downs, but this is a quality place, it's really going places, and those are the candidates that we want to bring. So I, I think that's part of the 85%, getting the, the right people before you as a board.
Okay, thank you. And I didn't really do much of an introduction for the public, if anybody is watching. Obviously, this is a work-study session, and you're kind of getting the gist of what this is, but this is all part of the process. When we signed the contract with Leadership Associates, this was the very first thing that we do, and that's why we planned this initial meeting, so the board will be able to go through everything that we're going to be going through tonight, which is the timelines and all of those things. But the public, be assured, you will be part of the process at some point. This is our initial meeting to get the schedule and get everything going. So I will turn it back to you.
I'm going to let David do the next part.
Okay, Dr. Lynch and Dr. Verdugo?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Yes.
If I may, I'm going to ask if you have this particular sheet in front of you, and that is tonight's agenda. It's this initial meeting, and we have some discussion items that we'd like to refer to. And so Dennis has already kind of bridged a little bit of the information that we need to share with you in terms of discussion, action item, and review of the search process. But if you're looking at this particular agenda at this point in time, we want to go ahead and begin to look at these bullet points and numbers and establish some responses from the board with respect to the questions that are there. So again, what we would like to do is go down this laundry list. We will all take a portion, a portion of it. To begin with, we'd like to ask that the, that the board designate a liaison or spokesperson for the board. And of course, generally, that is and has been in the past, at least it's been our experience, that has been the president and the vice president of the Board of Education. That is not, that is, that is for some really basic information, where we need to get some information to you or you to us. It does not mean, however, that we don't share a bit of that information with the entire board, of course, the balance of the board, but we're conscientious of Brown Act aspects and things of that sort. So at this point in time, we're going to need some feedback from the board as it relates to that, those two people being the liaison. And again, those were just examples on my part of typically, that's what is provided to us when we do these searches.
Okay, so, and tell me again, like, what, what are the types of things that this liaison is going to be receiving, and?
If we needed a quick answer on how we get ahold of somebody, or if we need some communication, or we want to let you know, we, we have some issues we want to talk to you about before we move forward, any of those kinds of things? General things that we're talking about, like how many candidates are looking at it, those kinds of things go to everybody. Sometimes we just need a quick communication. Typically, it is the board president. If you weren't available, maybe the board vice president, but typically, it is at least the board president. It's, for all big information, for major, everybody gets that, but particularly on those kinds of things, we're checking on something, we want to know more about something.
Okay. All right, for the rest of the board, any thoughts on that? Is there?
I think you've been appointed.
All right. I think it's anybody who wants to say yes, hello? And then trustee Yamazaki is the vice president. Are you?
Yeah.
Okay with me?
Okay.
Thank you. And again, that's typically the protocol that's utilized. I did now go to want to go to number three, and that is confirm, and we've done that already with Karen, as a matter of fact, confirm that the executive assistant has received the guidelines and many of the templates that will be utilized within the office of the administrative staff. So we have, in fact, done that. We are, we have either received or will receive shortly Board of Trustees' email addresses, and we wanted to confirm that. We'll do that with Karen directly. That is an example of when we would want to give you all updates, how many candidates have applied, the type of candidate that have applied, as an example. You might have five superintendents, two assistant supes, one director, one Vons market store manager, you know? So we do, in fact, share that information on a timely basis, typically every week.
I think, I think it would be helpful if we have your emails and cell phones. That would be helpful. So if Karen can provide us that, we're great.
Correct. Number five is the discussion of the use of the input from the board, stakeholder groups, and online survey results in the process of developing your position profile. I'm going to refer to a sheet that you have in front of you as well, Educational Partners and Community Forum. This is simply a user-friendly template, little bit of a laundry list of, again, generally the types of stakeholder groups that you would like us to reach out to, but we want to confirm and/or add to this list as well. So as you take a glance at that list, we will be doing that this evening with the trustees. That is number one. That's this initial meeting. And then it's just a matter of whether or not you give us the thumbs up with respect to some of these, one, number two through 16. But some of these are unique, and there be, will be others that you'd want us to add to. Former board members?
I would just add, David, that I think what you said is really true. This is just a template. Many board members say, oh, no, we don't need former board members, we like this and that. So this is a good one, just to simply, just talk about who you think is important for us to talk with, and, and who would really value being asked, too.
And also, reminder that everybody's going to have the access to the online survey. So they may not be somebody that we need to actually talk to in person or Zoom, but they may be, just do the online survey, and we can, well, they have access to how to do that on your website.
Is this a time to add to, to this now, or are we going to do this later?
It can be, yes.
I had just had a thought that also former administrators, retired administrators, and even teachers, not that you have to talk to all of them, like you said, it'll be accessible to everybody, but I think reaching out to, to some of them is a good idea. I know I would have plenty to say if I wasn't on the board right now as a retired administrator, but I think that's important, because they've been through other superintendents, and they've seen different leaders through the years.
Very good. We, we do have that down. Others, as you look at that template or that list, that perhaps don't exist, that we would cross out? Pretty standard list. So again, how about those that would be added to the list?
Yes, trustee Page?
Also, we have family resource centers and programs that serve our families outside of our school district, and it's really important that we meet them where they're, they feel safe and where they're at, including with interpretation. Many families don't feel safe coming to the district office based on their own experience previously, or. So I think it's really crucial that we go out into the community, especially with our, those specific populations. And so there's a couple that we can share with you, and trustee Erickson also has others, like with the family center, that would be good.
If we can get those names and contact people, we can talk with Karen about setting those up.
Great. And I had a question about the elementary school and middle school students, and how those focus groups would, would be? How would that be developmentally appropriate?
Well, as Peggy mentioned, we work in conjunction and alignment with, with Karen, and we would begin to look at what is most comfortable for your middle school students. Might it just be the ASB students, perhaps? But you may want a broader range of student representation. We typically have not had what I'm going to call a lot of luck at the elementary level, but we do start at the middle school level and provide an opportunity for, we try to make it fun, and we suggest perhaps that in the library, one of us would meet in the library with those students, along with the site principal. I typically throw in a little bit of pizza, lunch, and so on, and we have found that to be really important and accessible, working with the site principal directly at the middle school level. At the high school level, you most likely have a variety of representative groups, representative groups, and not just the ASB group.
But you have student board members, right? So they're, they're a big factor in that, too.
Right. So we arrange that accordingly with the site principal, and typically, it has been Zoom in the past, but very often, it's face-to-face as well. It's nice to, that's really an exciting time, to be, to be very honest with you, with respect to speaking to those students.
Okay, I just want to add that it's really important to me, and I think a couple other board members, that we reach out to elementary school students.
Okay.
And also, there's a parent advisory group for early childhood age range, that, that might be a good group to reach out to as well, knowing that they have students as young as three years old, all the way up to five-year-olds.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you both. I just wanted to add, because I know that you have a school site council, but I also wanted to mention with regards to students, maybe a WASC kind of model, and that would help with representation across the board. And I know you've mentioned that, Dr. Verdugo, but at the same time, I think that's probably a, a more reflective method of getting feedback from at least most high schools and, and most middle schools that interact in that way. And then to piggyback on what trustee Page said, maybe the fifth and sixth grade from the elementary school level, just so that they, maybe a precursor would be, what does a superintendent do? And then, you know, what, what can we do to support them as far as principals are concerned? And then lead into, you know, what are you looking for in a leader and things of that nature?
My elementary student superintendent, and Brao called me Super Nintendo.
He's right.
Because they had no idea what I did.
Which is perfect.
It's a great point, the fifth and sixth, as well as that WASC kind of aspect to things. My students at the elementary level could never pronounce Verdugo very well. It was always Dr. Verdudu. And so, you know, it was fun to always work with them, of course, but we've got that down. Thank you, Mr. Glass.
In terms of giving you specific names and things like that, how, how are we doing that? I mean, you don't want to get each of us to?
Anything you wanted to provide Karen?
Okay.
Of, of specific people, individuals? A lot of those are phone calls rather than in-person meetings, but any list of, like, if it's the president of the Chamber of Commerce, or if you wanted. We often have meetings, sorry if you interrupt that. We often have meetings with community, like service clubs, and we invite them all at the same time. We don't need to have the Kiwanis separate from the Rotary unless they don't like each other or something, but typically, we just invite them all together, and a lot of those are Zoom, because they don't come to meetings, so they work out pretty well that way.
Okay. And looking, there's the Education Foundation on here, and I think that that's definitely a group that you're going to want to talk to, because it is a lot of retirees, former teachers, former, I think, admin as well, and current parents. It's just a, it's a great representative group, I think.
Yes. And I'll just mention the Open Community Forum as well. Typically, that's held in, let's say, a gymnasium, perhaps a library, and we would ask you folks and/or Karen, you know, what's that combination of, of venues? Do we want to go to the Villa Park area? Do we want to go to the Orange High School area? Or do we need to do maybe even a couple of those?
Okay. Yeah, we definitely have different, different communities, and we're a really large geographic area, so we'll probably, I would imagine, have to do, too. So trustee Yamazaki?
I also wanted to ask if we could
I also wanted to ask if we could include former school board members as well because they have been really active in the past. And so I think their perspective would be really important.
Absolutely. And I think the other thing, if I may for a moment, is just mention the fact that, the fact that you're inviting these folks makes a tremendous difference as well.
I'm sorry, Dennis needs you to talk closer to the mics. He can hear us. Sorry, Dennis, I got us now.
Yep, thank you. Okay.
Yes, trustee Bing?
I'm wondering if you can share a little bit more about what happens when you talk to these people. So do you record it? Do you then come up with, you know, some themes? And what does, what does it look like for us on the receiving end after all of this?
Right. We're actually going to discuss that towards the end of this particular agenda.
It does go perfectly, though, into position description.
Right.
A little bit.
Yeah.
And that might help you, so.
Which is the next bullet point, if I may, just for a moment. So as of right now, we're affirming and confirming these particular groups off of this template, including those that you've added accordingly. Are there any, is there any others?
I also wanted to remind everyone that we have several foundations. Of course, we have the Orange Unified Public Schools Foundation, which is the larger umbrella organization. But we have some smaller foundations at some of the individual schools, like at Canyon High School, Running Springs, McPherson, and I think Fletcher has one. So, and those are all strong groups as well. And you don't want to leave them out of getting involved.
Okay, I certainly have added that as well.
Okay.
Permission to go on, board president?
Regarding that in particular, because there may not be an equitable number on one side of the district and the other, it may skew some of the data. So we may have representation from those different groups that just happen to be, you know, in one general location because, because. So, you know, so we want to try to be as equitable as possible with regards to that level of feedback.
Great, thanks.
Correct, correct. Well, if I may, I'd like to go on to the next bullet under number five, the second bullet. And that deals with the position description. But the first thing that we request from the district is a narrative of the community and the district. And we add that information to the eventual position description. And that position description is primarily made up of the stakeholder input along with the board in terms of, Mrs. Vane, the characteristics, the experiences, personal and professional, that this board and/or your stakeholders desire. We accumulate all of that information. We condense it as well. We gather that from the survey as well. And we would not move forward with that position unless it's approved by the entire board. So you get to see that position description first off, prior to having that in any kind of an advertisement where that's going to gain interest from various interested applicants. It's, again, a description of the district, a description of the community, but more specifically, a description of what you desire most. So for an example, you may desire someone who's had bond referendum experience. It's interesting, back in '06, '07, when we were having the recession, a lot of districts were hiring chief business officers, primarily because of the fiscal problems that were occurring. You know, our sense is that you're going to want a very well-balanced position description that describes what you feel this board needs to move forward in the immediate future and beyond. So those are the characteristics that we are going to try to capture from all of the survey, as well as all of the interviews that we have.
The other two things that we ask in all those meetings, and we'll ask it tonight, is in addition to the characteristics, qualities, experiences, what are the challenges of the district? And what are the strengths of the district? We want to be able to get a good profile across the board of those factors because that helps us in our recruitment, right? That helps us identify that position description. You'll also get an executive summary of all the input. You'll also get all the survey results. And you're also going to get all the input documents, which are voluminous. But they also, it's sort of like you were talking about, Dr. Glass, that WASC review, right? And so it's a good self-study for the district to look at, how are people feeling about us? What do they think we need to pay attention to? So that's really an important part.
And those challenges can sometimes be just as important, if not more important, than the strengths of the district. So we are asking the strengths, the characteristics, and the challenges that this school district is currently facing. And again, as I mentioned previously, the majority of the board members need to review and respond to the position description prior to us posting that information for candidates and applicants.
And what is the timeline of that? That would be like mid-February?
We're going to do the timeline because I think we have to update from the draft you had just to make sure we're clear. Because we're only, we're meeting today. So for example, the online survey dates we had were originally February 10th. That's pretty tight for next week.
Okay.
So we might need to juggle that a little bit.
Okay.
So that's, we'll do that to finalize that.
Most likely February 17th or the week of, we would begin that process. Although your survey can begin once we work with Karen and your technology department and blast that out as well, have that on your website as well. It's rather user-friendly, yeah.
I should have clarified. My question, in developing the position description, that's going to take place after everything, right? And then you'll come back here. And how do we workshop that? Do you give us sort of like a draft and then we...
We'll give you, provide you a draft, probably electronically.
Okay.
It doesn't require a board vote at all. It's just to give us feedback if you think there's anything we're missing.
Got it, okay.
Typically, it's as a result of consensus and not necessarily a vote.
Perfect, thank you.
The final bullet under number five is the online survey dates in specific languages. And as Peggy mentioned, we may want to defer that until we get back into the timeline aspect. But one of the things that I would ask at this point in time is the desire to have that survey in other languages. I'm assuming Spanish, English. Is there any other dominant language that you feel is important that we have that survey available in?
Go ahead, anybody? I know Vietnamese, probably, right?
We might need to get, you may need to get some numbers from the district. But I'm sure there's a few more that are some of our higher percentages. Korean or Vietnamese or, yeah. So we probably need to look at the highest, I don't know.
Yeah, we generally look, Mrs. Pelli, at the highest percentage that you might have within that department that deals with that, that aspect of things. Okay.
Will definitely be Spanish and English, for sure.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get those numbers to you.
Any questions regarding number five? Yes, sir?
Where we will talk about the actual survey language? Or is there another part for that?
It's coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Dennis, if you're ready to refer to number six?
The timeline?
No, the, yes, the adoption of the timeline, the acts of publication dates and so on.
Yeah, I'm, actually, I was just trying to, David, can you, I'm trying to pull that up and I'm unable to, I apologize right now.
Do you want me to take that, Dennis, for a minute?
Maybe, why don't you do that? And I'm still trying to find it on my computer.
Sure.
When you, the timeline is probably best for you to look at, even though we're going to do parts back and forth on it. But originally, we had said the dates for publication would be February 10th and 24th. That's when edcal publishes. So that's next week. And I think we're a little late to get in on the 10th. So we probably are really looking at the 17th and the 20, what it?
24th.
24th, so it'd be two weeks, 17th to 24th. In order, if we're trying to make our deadline for applications March 10th, those are dates when we would need to publish. So this 10th isn't going to work for the AXA thing. It would have to be that. Obviously, we're already on our website. It's already, because you approved our contract, it's already advertised on our website that we have the search with no details about timeline yet, obviously. In fact, I had a text message from somebody yesterday about the Orange search, wanting to know what's going on. So we'll have people wanting to know soon. But I think the February 17th is the better date instead of the 24th, so we can do those two dates.
Can you clarify, obviously, you originally said February 10th and 24th, so that would be a two-week period that it's there. Was there an advantage to having it over a two-week period as opposed to a one-week period?
I don't know, Dennis, if you're, can you hear that question about is two weeks in a row? Do you want to skip a week? I don't think it's a problem to have two weeks in a row, as long as the deadline is still out there.
Yeah, no, I think there's actually some benefits to it. And the other point is, we pay a little extra and we, the minute, actually tomorrow, the minute it's approved, it goes online in terms of the advertisement. So people can go online and then they can link onto the website. So I think there'll be plenty of advertisement time.
And AXA has an electronic way of having us advertise it, too, without, before the newspaper part, the edcal part.
Okay.
Okay.
And lastly, if I may, in addition, we blast out to over 1,500 individuals about the fact that there's a vacancy or an opening.
So the publication dates were set on, established the dates for stakeholder input. It seems to me, given this, next week's not going to work. It's a little too soon. And we want Karen to like all of us at the end of the search. So we'll probably look at more like the, starting the 17th or potentially even the 19th. So somewhere in that period of time, we would start the actual input. And that'll be in-person, that'll be Zoom, that'll be all of those kinds of things. So we would coordinate that directly with her in terms of getting that communication out. I believe the 17th may even be a holiday.
It is a holiday.
It's a holiday, correct. So it wouldn't start the 17th, we wouldn't be able to do that. So probably the 18th or 19th, we would actually begin the work of the in-person input sessions, all of those kinds of things, so that we get that. And we would likely end up syncing the timing of when we do that with the start of the online survey, just to put them all together. So that's, makes the most sense to me. So that's that part, I think. The closed session date for application or view, this is, we will get the, if the close is on the 10th of March, we start right away doing all the background checks. That's our referencing, all of those kinds of things. That's, that's the heavy lifting in some ways for us. It's the most important part. We want candidates to be vetted carefully. We want to know everything we can. We would suggest a special meeting on the 20th. And that's a fairly long meeting. It could be sometime around that. It doesn't have to be the 20th, but somewhere around that, where we would actually be able to come in with, you would have received, and actually, I think in some ways, it'd be better if it's after the 20th because we're going to be close on the 10th to get all the reference checking done and get you the information. Typically, about five days before that meeting, you'll be given access to the portal where you can read all the applications. So once we know that meeting date, then we'll have, we'll give you time to have, to really read all that before. We'll also give you the background of what we think are sort of the top-tier candidates in relationship to what we've heard. So if you, if we hear from everybody, it really needs to be this kind of thing. And this person doesn't have it, then we will going to help give you some thinking around that. Doesn't mean that you can't interview somebody else. It just means from our perspective, based on all the input.
Can we take a moment just to see how we are, does everybody have their calendars out?
Yeah, please.
And we can kind of nail that down. I know that we, let's see, hold on. We have a placeholder meeting scheduled for the 26th already of March. Is the 26th an okay day?
I know, you know, the issue here is they close on the 7th. And then if we do the, let's say the 20th, that gives us about nine days.
It's not enough.
The time that the board selects and then the actual interview. So we can't push too late past the 17th, 20th, or maybe 21st just because then we have to get you everything for the interviews to take place.
And actually, I will not be in town on the 29th.
The 29th?
Yeah, the special meeting to interview the candidates.
On the 26th, you mean?
Right now, the draft has the 29th as the time you would interview.
Yeah. I thought we were, oh, I see, okay. Gotcha.
And that's a Saturday.
Yeah.
And that's an all-day event. Takes a while to get through all the candidates and all those kinds of things. But if we do the 29th, this is really based on the fact that probably Dr. Christensen can't stay forever because he has some time constraints, obviously. So we were trying to move this and obviously, typical search in the spring, it's July 1 start. That's not probably going to work. So we're trying to kind of tighten that down. Our timeframe, if we close on the 10th, leaves us 10 days, barely do all our reference checking, not even all our reference checking. But the 20th would be the meeting where you could, or even the 21st. The 20th is a Thursday, the 23rd is a Friday, so that may not work for you. But, and that can be any time, but it does take about three hours.
Well, okay.
It could be a Saturday, too.
Could be a Saturday.
Go ahead.
Depending on what people.
You asked, my question was how long it's going to be? You said fairly long, then you just said three hours.
About three hours, yeah.
That gives us a sense, thank you.
Yeah, we could do Saturday morning, the 22nd, or sometimes Saturday, if that's easier for some of you. Trustee Page is saying, yes, please.
I have class Thursday night, so I can't make the Thursday.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So the March 22nd meeting is this closed?
Closed session.
Session where that's approximately three hours, where we go through the applications and select candidates to be interviewed.
Correct.
Okay. Does everybody have the 22nd open? Okay, and do we want that to be a morning meeting?
Up to you however you want to work that, it's up to you.
You want to do Friday?
Friday would give you one extra day. Would, it kind of sounds like you guys are, that's going to be a tight timeline. So would two days be better for you?
I think that, if you can do the Saturday, I think in some ways, that's a little bit more flexible for everybody in terms of really, we just want to do all our reference checking well.
Because I would assume Friday needs to be at night because of work, so. Oh, you are off that day. Oh, yeah, because we're visiting schools. That's right. I don't know. I mean, I would rather do Saturday. I just think it's more flexible. But I'm open to whatever works for people. Okay. All right, who wants Saturday? Why don't we just have consensus? Okay, all right, we're good. Okay, Saturday, the 22nd, and should we do 10:00 AM? Okay.
Good.
Dr. Smith, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that, I think that's really good. I think that's good. And it's two to three hours. And it's a pretty exciting meeting. You would have had a chance to look at all the candidates. And then there's really very, very robust conversations. So I think that's great.
Okay, so with that date, if I'm not mistaken, it probably would make some sense to have the interviews on Saturday, April 5th, rather than the week after. Dr. Smith, I think with our staff and the work they need to do to prepare materials, does that make sense to you?
Well, I don't know what the spring break is like for, for Orange. I think that it'll be tight, but I think we could do it in a week if we needed to. But what does your spring break look like in April?
Yeah, it's that week.
Yeah, Mar, Monday.
Which week is it?
March 31st through April 4th.
So we would have to then, what's then the, so Peggy, I think we're kind of coming down to it'd be the following, what's that, following Saturday after?
The 29th.
Fourth.
What, I'm sorry, the following?
The 29th, March 29th. The week after, you do the candidate review. It's, if we can't, because the fifth, it doesn't sound like the fifth works.
Wouldn't it?
Does the fifth work?
I don't know that it doesn't work. We might want to poll and find out.
Does the fifth work?
I mean, is, it doesn't work for you, trustee Yamazaki? Okay. I think we definitely need to have all of us there.
Yeah, I have a trip scheduled.
Okay.
For the wedding.
Then the 12th?
The 12th is Passover, that's the only, yeah, so I don't know if that's...
We can also do a middle of the week. We've done this before. We would probably do it at a location off-site for confidentiality purposes. Saturday tends to be a nice day, but we've done it on other days if we can't find a Saturday. Saturday.
I mean, would you do one day during the week, or like two afternoons versus one full day?
You know, traditionally, I think it's.
It's all one day.
One, one full day seems to work best.
Does anything the week of the 7th of April work for a daytime meeting?
I mean, I'm, right now, open every day, so I'll leave it to, how is everybody's schedule?
I think if we only do one Saturday, that would be, instead of having both of these meetings, two Saturdays, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Be better for you to have a weekday then, it sounds like, yeah.
I mean, generally speaking.
What about the 7th, 38th?
How many interviews would we, would a typical board be interviewing? I mean, are we talking, I mean, I know it's up to us.
Right.
Obviously, but, I mean, you know.
It's typically five or six.
Okay, and are they an hour?
About an hour each.
So we're talking.
But then there's also the bring back to the, typically you interview, let's say you interview six, and then you have top two, everybody talks about, you decide you have two you want to bring back for a second round.
Right.
That is the same afternoon, so it can go into the evening, because you bring them back for another hour.
On that same day.
Same day, yeah, and then deliberate.
It gets to be a day, I mean, Trustee Erickson, probably, probably an eight to 5:30 or six day.
So either way, it's going to be a full day, so it'll either be a week.
It will be.
Day, where people are going to have to take off work, or a Saturday.
So for example, if you pick, let's say theoretically, April 7th, it would be a full day. You would start, most likely, as Dennis mentioned, off-campus or at a local hotel or whatever the case might be.
So our candidates would have to take off work to be there?
Yes.
Yes. And generally, we would start around 7:30, if that's comfortable, with an orientation for the board as to what's going to take place that day. We can certainly have that orientation start at 8:00, and then begin our interviews of those five or six people at 8:30. So that gives you a little bit of wiggle room there.
And some of that'll depend on how many you decide to interview.
Correct.
If you.
It's not surprising, I mean, the boards would usually do the, the four to five range and, and maybe six. The interview's a little, little less than an hour, but there's, you know, breaks, about 15 minutes, and there's breaks in between, and debriefing and lunch and so forth. It's a really good day, but it, it's a full day, there's no question about it.
Okay.
But at the end of that day, you will have identified the candidate that, that you want to do, negotiate a contract with, and perhaps do a site visit and so forth. So there's work to do after that, but that's the big day of choosing your top candidate.
Okay, so let's, we've got that week, the 7th through the 12th. So I know Trustee Vane does not want Saturday, the 12th, I think, if we can do it during the week.
And we cannot do the 10th.
You cannot do the 10th.
Leadership Associates has a full, has a big event with all of our former partners, a reunion thing, and so it's already scheduled for the 10th, so I'm sorry about that.
I would prefer the 11th.
Okay, Friday, the 11th? Okay, can you do the 11th? Can everybody do the 11th? All right, 11th it is. And you said 7:30, wow, okay.
Peggy, let me just make sure, we got March 10th as the closing, March 22nd, meeting with the board, that's a Saturday at 10:00, and interviews April 11th.
Correct.
We're all, okay, good. The, the other part of this is the board can make a decision, and normally they would do, they could do a site visitation, that's normally with maybe a subcommittee of the board, it could be done by Zoom or in-person, it doesn't always have to take place. But because we're moving this to the 11th, the April 16th might push it for the superintendent's contract approval. And so what, and we can talk to Mr. Christensen, we can talk to the attorneys, what, the law says, you have to approve the superintendent's contract at a regularly scheduled board meeting, that's why we chose April 16th. But at a regularly scheduled board meeting, you can schedule a regularly scheduled meeting, and so you can, you can add a meeting. So the, the 16th is probably not going to work based on this calendar, but it could be a week or two after that. So that may be something that has to be discussed, probably within the next week or so, to just see if you want to try to schedule another regularly scheduled board meeting after the 16th.
What is your next meeting after April 16th?
May 7th.
May 7th?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that wouldn't be that, actually.
That would work, that could work.
Could we, I mean, could we switch our April 16th meeting to the 23rd?
That would be good with that.
Not here? No? Okay.
No.
The May 7th date can work in that sense. Really what happens between the time you select the candidate is working on the contract language and getting it finalized and approved, so that you, everybody's clear on that, your attorney, one of the things we'll need would be the current contract that you've had, so that we can use that, and then, most attorneys kind of create a fill-in-the-blank kind of thing, so they know what you want. We'll need to know what you're still okay with, whether you want to change anything, and that kind of thing. But that, we don't need that today, but we'll need the copy of the contract, and Karen can just email that to us.
I think we're, we're already working on that.
Could I suggest that we leave the 16th open?
Okay.
And then default to the May date, if necessary? Because it depends on who the candidate is, right?
Correct.
And what's, you know, the comfort level and all that. So to say it's not going to happen until May, I think it shuts the door on the 16th.
Okay, that's fine with us.
So if you guys are okay with that.
It's a really good idea.
That's great.
As it gets closer, then we can punt to the May 7th.
Yeah.
And then we are working on getting you the information that you just requested.
Yeah, thanks.
And one other item, if I may go back to the advertisement and the ad that appears in EdCal, I've just received a text message from Linda Harder, the assistant that'll be helping and working with Karen. Those dates now will be February 24th, which we have there, but also March 3rd. So there will be two dates.
You know, David, we may want to check on that, because if we, is, that's getting really close to the.
To the deadline.
The closing date.
Right. I'm actually looking at the EdCal publication calendar right now on my phone, and.
They don't publish on the 17th, probably.
What about the 10th?
Next week, I think we're too late to get it in. Let us work on the publication dates, I think with Linda, we can figure that out, what would work best, but we want to be sure that somebody has a time between the 3rd and the 10th to get everything done for the application deadline. But we'll figure that out.
And March 3rd. Okay. We've done that before, it's tight, but we'll have it on our website, and it'll be on EdCal electronically, so I think we can make that work.
Yeah, and if need be, we will, we can call AXA and find out if we can get some liberties there, because today would have been the deadline for February 10th. So we, we know some folks that might be able to.
Help.
Arrange that and help us.
One other thing we didn't do, and this just doesn't need an answer now, is where you want to interview, since it's going to be on a workday, you don't want to hear at the district office. Sometimes it's the Chamber of Commerce has, a facility, whatever, you'll need to think about that, since we'll be, don't want to be onsite that day.
Is that, I think I heard somebody say it can be a hotel room, it can be anything that's just, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Just has to be in the Orange boundaries, which will be, would not be difficult.
Oh, okay.
And our assistant will provide Karen with all the details of how the setup goes, what we need, because we have people come in, we meet them in a separate room, bring them in, we don't want them to running into each other and the candidates, those kinds of things, so we'll work out that detail, so as you're looking at a facility, that helps you think about what it could be.
So once we revise this, well, you'll send out like a 20.
Yes, uh-huh, yeah, absolutely. All right, our next part's going to be 7, 8, 9, 10, before we move into 11. So 7, just candidate recruitment, based on all the input, you know, we're, as I said, we've already had people start to say, what about Orange Unified, so we know we'll have people wanting to talk about that, but it's our job, and when we meet, for example, next Tuesday, we have a Zoom call with all of our partners, we're going to talk about the search there, let people know if you have somebody who thinks a good candidate, talk to us, we'll talk to them, sort of reach out, and so we'll have, I don't have any question, you'll have a great pool of candidates.
You'll have a high volume. We just got back, both Peggy and I, from the AXA soup symposium, and so there was a buzz, if I can put it that way, about the opportunity that exists here. It'll be a destination district in many ways.
Yeah. Contract parameters worksheet, just so you know, we ask each, once we have your contract, but we also ask each candidate to tell us that is going to get an interview, not everybody has to do this, but we ask them to tell us what do they want in contract terms, what do they want in salary, what do they want, and, you know, they want to belong, be able to have AXA membership paid, any of those kinds of things. We'll have that for every candidate that you interview. That allows us to begin to say, is there a deal breaker? If they're asking for $450,000, and you clearly probably don't want to pay $450,000, I'm guessing, we'll, we'll have that opportunity to go back and forth with them, and then when you get down to that final candidate, we'll really be sort of doing that. We are not lawyers, we don't write the contract language, but we'll be able to provide you with the information to your attorney that will tell them how to write that contract. Okay? A copy of the current superintendent, we talked about, any board questions, our big part today is really to move into what do you want? What kind of, what do you want to tell us about the qualities, experiences, et cetera? But do you have an answer for the questions we might not have covered yet?
Anyone?
I realize some of you.
It's been pretty thorough.
I realize some of you've never been through this, so it'll be fun.
I think only one of us has been through this, so.
Okay, good, then none.
So we appreciate your experience in helping guide us in, in this process.
Great.
So I think, just for this, I think we'll kind of go down the line, and then it, after everybody's kind of said something, maybe we can just open up to discussion, so you can maybe address anything else that you heard from another board member, because this is kind of our place where we're really, is this where we're doing, I'm sorry, desired qualities and all of that?
Yeah, so, we start with, we desire a superintendent who, and we want you to just say they have a doctorate, they, whatever kinds of things, strengths, and then challenges. And Dr. Vidugo's going to facilitate, and I'm going to type.
Okay.
Madam President, do you want me to start with Mr. Glass, and just move this way?
He always, we always start with Dr. Glass, and I think, do you want to start? Or would you rather start over here?
Maybe Trustee Yamazaki can start, since she has the most experience in this.
Sounds like a good idea.
Okay. And what we're, and what we're doing here, if I may, is Peggy is going to begin to capture those comments from each board member in terms of the desired qualities, the characteristics, and the experiences, personal and professional, that you desire most in the next superintendent. Along with that, we'd like to ask you what you believe are the district's strengths and/or challenges, and then following that, any questions that the board might have, we will do that at the end. So having said that, that's really what we're looking for now, we're going to capture those, memorialize those, and we'll begin to blend those into our position description.
Okay. One of the things I think Orange Unified is strong is that people who come here stay here. I've never seen this like in other areas where families, they come to our schools when, we, we have families who've been here for generations, and they come back. I've talked to so many parents who said, I want to come back to this area. So I think that's one of our strengths, because that gives us a lot of continuity, too. And the second thing is that we have pretty involved parents, and I think that's wonderful. The other strength, I, we're very diverse in our district. We have diversity in ethnicity, we have diversity in socioeconomic levels, and so, and that can be a challenge, but I also think it's a strength.
Correct.
But we definitely need a superintendent who understands that, who understands our community, somebody who knows, like, at least the general area, you know, someone from, okay?
I was going to stop for just a second, because I just want to be sure. So I write it, diversity was one of them. The third, the other strength you said, that people who come here stay here.
Mm-hmm.
And involve parents, right?
Yeah.
Are you moving to desired characteristics?
Pardon?
Are you doing a desired characteristic, or are you staying on strengths?
Um, strengths, well, do you want me to move into desire?
No, I, I just want to stay in the same.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, make sure you have your mic.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure we're staying in the same area at the same time, so we're focusing on strengths first, okay?
Okay. And I just want to say thank you again, because I didn't get a chance to say that, thank you for doing this. Leadership Associates has been, you know, one of the top-notch organizations that we work with, I have a lot of respect, especially for Mr. Smith and Mr. Beckler. And you guys are always welcoming, transparent, communicative, professional, and those are the things that I'm also looking for in the superintendent.
Right.
I've never felt dismissed, or rushed, or when asking questions, very responsive. And even though I think I was the only school board member here during the initial search, but the search got cut off before we even did the interviews, so we decided on a candidate before we proceeded with interviews, so I don't feel like I had the whole full gamut of, the whole process, so.
Correct.
So I just want to clarify that.
And Mrs. Yamazaki, what characteristics do you desire most in the next superintendent? You've shared a little bit about the strengths and maybe even some of the challenges to a certain degree, but what comes to mind when you think of what you'd like to see in the next leader and superintendent here in the school district?
I would like to, I think I mentioned our school district is diverse, and so I need the new superintendent to understand how to deal with our community, how to work with them. I need someone to be able to reach out, not be afraid of working with our community members and listening, because we have very diverse opinions as well.
Correct.
And I respect that, and I want our new superintendent to listen to.
By all means.
All of our stakeholders.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not unusual to see in a position description, a good listener, an open-door policy, those kinds of things, someone who's, has dealt with equity and, and diversity and so on, okay. Okay to move on?
Okay.
Okay.
If I think of anything, I'll come up.
Yeah, absolutely, we'll make it a round-robin kind of opportunity.
Okay.
Ms. Page?
Thank you.
And it might be easier, if I may, to have, for Peggy to start with those characteristics that you desire most in the next superintendent, then go to strengths and then challenges.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Some of the characteristics that I've been thinking about are, in addition to, you know, being a good listener and different things like that, it's like really being a leader who inspires others, and able to continue a lot of the work that has started with Mr. Christensen, and we are going to start facing a lot of challenges with some of the plans that he's already presented to us with school consolidation, and looking at our, you know, how work is disseminated amongst the different departments. And we know that that scope of work isn't going to finish within the next couple months, that the next superintendent will need to carry that on. And so even though we do want the next superintendent to bring their own ideas of how our district could potentially grow, that there is some continued work that is already great happening within our district, that we want that to, to continue. With some experience and their background, it would be great to hear how they really bring in diverse communities in. It's really easy to hear the loud voices and the voices that are always influential within the school district, but I would love for them to question which voices aren't being heard, and how they can go out and reach and meet with those populations. With some of our district's strengths and challenges, we're a really big district, and not necessarily by student population, but geographically, and there's a lot of need. So how can they really work with others, like the rest of the cabinet? How can they really create that team, not just within our executive cabinet, but then also with our site leaders and, and different things like that? Like, every school doesn't have the same need, and how can they maneuver that? And then I'll save my questions for later, because I'm sure they'll be answered as we continue on.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pelly?
Okay, so I agree with everything I've heard, so I won't repeat some of those things, especially, I will repeat this one, because this is important. I agree about someone who has ideas and is innovative, but I think it's important that they can come in and continue, continue with our vision, but then add to it. But we've started some things here that I think we want to keep going.
Yeah.
I think it's important to have someone with experience in, it wouldn't have to be someone who's been a superintendent necessarily, but someone who has experience in dealing with so many of the issues and things we have going on. Newer, younger people can be qualified, but if they don't have the experience, I just feel like with this district and with some of the things that we're facing.
Correct.
They need to have some experience behind them.
Absolutely.
I think that's really important. Someone who truly will advocate and value our diverse communities, I guess I did repeat that one a little, but that one is, is huge for me.
Correct.
And to really be inspirational, innovative, making those connections with people, but also, we need to have someone who can hold people accountable. That's how you move districts, and, and you can do that with compassion, you can lead with compassion, that was something we've been trained on, and I think that's really And I think that's really important. And also someone who's very, who knows their values. And, and again, I think that comes with experience, where you're able to stick, to say, "This is what I believe, and this aligns with the district, and this is what we're doing," even when faced with some of the adversity that we may be faced with.
Correct.
Strengths of our district, for a large district, I think we have a lot of connections between people, and we feel like kind of a small-town district, I think. I started here and left for a while, and when I came back, people were saying, "Welcome home," and some of them didn't even know me, you know, but it felt like I was coming home, and I love that about Orange. I think we have so many passionate leaders and teachers and people who want to train and are willing to be trained and very well-qualified for that. Our IT department is amazing. We've been through so much, but I think that's a huge plus for us. We have a lot of really, really great programs, which can also be a weakness. So going into, I think, some of our weaknesses, we do a lot of things, but we sometimes take on too many things, and it's hard to do everything really well.
Right.
And I think it's good to narrow down sometimes to what's really important, and that's where the superintendent can come in and say, "Here are the really important things we need to be intentional about." I think sometimes we want to, even though we try these new things, we kind of go back to the status quo because it's comfortable. And we need to be able to get out of our comfort zones more, and again, that happens with a strong leader.
Correct.
And then just, I will always go back to, to what I know. I think we need to support our, our site administrators and our teachers really intentionally and really purposefully. We have the emotional support, and we have other things that are more broad, but I just feel like that's something we really need to, to focus on.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. Well, having watched what this district's gone through in the last couple of years, it's been sad, but I know we're in the right place now and moving forward. With that being said, I'm hoping to find someone well-versed on the ed side, of course, as well as the business side. I work on the business side in a school district. So most all of everything I want to say has been said, that usually happens up here. But someone who leads with empathy, yet also holding them accountable. I think accountability is a huge thing that needs to happen. Someone who also, in the same realm, comes in and makes it a great place to work. We've seen a mass exodus of so many principals and so many fabulous leaders. We still have fabulous leaders, but unfortunately, that is the truth. I've watched it, we all have. And we want to retain, attract and retain excellent leaders. That was really one of my challenges, as well as finding somebody. Strengths, same thing, diversity is a huge strength in this district. There's so many things here offered to so many different groups of diverse students, and that's pretty much all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Madam President?
Thank you. I mean, first and foremost, the superintendent's the face of the district, and in a district as sort of diverse and, as diverse as ours, I think that it is a challenge. I know I'm skipping around, but I think the strength of that superintendent needs to be somebody who, I mean, ideally, I would like, you know, a doctorate in education and an MBA. I would like to marry, I mean, not, not specifically, but I mean, I want somebody who really is well-versed in the educational aspect, but also has some experience and understands the business of running a district, because it is, you are the CEO of a district. And there's so much more involved in, in that than I think a lot of people realize. And so I, you talked about having bond experience. I think that that would be something, that would be a plus, is to have somebody who has had those experiences and/or dealt with construction issues. Not that, I mean, we have a CBO and we have facilities people, but they need to be able to speak the language and understand when things are happening and when things are not happening. So I think it's really important to have somebody with enough experience. And again, you know, I don't necessarily think they have to be a superintendent, but I do think that that would be probably helpful for this district. I think that we sort of do have PTSD, and we have lost some talent. We've retained talent, but we've lost some talent, and we need to have somebody who sort of understands that and can really create that atmosphere and that face of the district that people feel confident in and people feel inspired by and people want to be a part of. And I think that when I think about it, confidence is a huge thing for me, because we're going to be going through difficult times. I think that that's clear. We really don't know what's going to be happening at the federal level. Every day, it seems that there's a different news piece. We don't know what our finances are going to be. We don't know those things. So we need to have somebody that's smart enough and experienced enough to be able to pivot in difficult situations and to be able to really be confident in that as well. You know, I think of the terms lifelong learner, you know, somebody that really values that education and inspires their team. That's somebody who is a team person, but inspires their team to be lifelong learners as well. Communication is a really big deal as well. It needs to be somebody that is, understands the value of communication and compassionate communication sometimes. We need to have a superintendent, I think sometimes that is able to tell the hard truths, but in a way that people understand where it's coming from and that it's not, that it's, it's based on facts and data, not just my opinion.
Yes.
You know, that somebody who humble, who is humble enough to say, you know, "These are some of the challenges that we have," and is truthful, I guess, you know? I think somebody mentioned sort of the loyalty in our district going to strengths now. I mean, you look at this board, and everybody on this board has a connection to Orange Unified, be it, you know, I'm an alumni, my husband's an alumni, my children are alumni. We have other alumni in Anna, we, and Matt, and we have former teachers, we have parents. So we're very, very invested, and I think that we all know people in the community that have been here forever, families that have been here forever. And that sometimes can be a challenge as well, because there's, you know, people get used to doing things a certain way, and, you know, sometimes it's hard to, you really do have to bring the community with you in this district and be really able to communicate things in a way that's important, that they understand why we're doing things. Longevity, I think, is a strength as well. Our community is amazing, and we have so many people that are willing to help where, where they can. Sometimes we're not as great at maybe communicating those opportunities, and I think sometimes we end up with information vacuums, and I think that we could probably be better in that regard. And I think that, you know, kind of goes with being the face of the district and really wanting to communicate. And again, we sort of do have this sort of PTSD where there's, I think staff is nervous and staff is anxious about who this person will be, and I want them to be able to come in and really inspire, lead, and provide confidence to our employees, because that is first and foremost who's dealing with our students. So I think that covers it.
Yeah, and if I may for a moment, this board is beginning to reflect that renewal that people are talking about, certainly. There's no doubt about it, and I think that's going to draw some candidates that are just excited about the opportunity, and we'll talk more a little bit as we go forward. Mr. Glass?
And thank you. Excellent qualities and strengths have always, already been listed, so I'm very pleased with that. As far as the qualities of a superintendent, visionary leadership is important to me. And to see beyond where we are right now, to make sure that we can get students to do some things as an outcome that are going to be transformational for them and for communities and families. A commitment to equity and inclusion, I think that's critical as well, not just within the context of students, but also teachers, as well as staff. Strong commitment to communication, which was already mentioned, but also with community engagement. I think that's important to me with regards to making sure that all parts of our district have the ability and the opportunity to be heard and to be recognized and uplifted. Talked about physical responsibility and resource management, which is always important and key. Instructional expertise and academic excellence, I think that it's important if that individual does not have that experience per se, that they're able to build a team that would assist in that regard. I think that's, I think that's very important. You know, President Erickson just mentioned the, essentially, the ability to navigate these political challenges. I think that's important, to be able to have, have wisdom, to, to find where justice sits so that they can navigate these things appropriately, because we're not always going to agree as far as community that we, that we serve. And it's going to be an important thing to have an individual that can walk that line and really get everyone on a page, not necessarily the same page, same, same page. Ethical leadership, I think, is critical as well, just making sure that, and I'll marry this to a conversation that happened earlier, but when it comes to an expert or experienced superintendent, I think being able to challenge the board is important, not to just do what we say, right? Even though there's a, there's a, there's a task that's attached to that.
Certainly.
But I think being able to say, "This is the reason why we've done this," or, "This is the reason why I recommend that we do this." Decisive leadership falls right into that same category, to be able to make moves that are going to be reflective of what the values of, of this community happen to be. And I'll add this as, as a final thought with regards to qualities, a focus on student and teacher well-being. As mentioned, PTSD is real, and a lot of things that the community has gone through, whichever side of the fence you're on, families have felt that, but teachers have felt that.
Sure.
And Trustee Thomas had mentioned, and many others had intimated the same, a lot of talent is left. They, they've gone to other places where they just can feel more supported, and I think that's an important thing for an individual, not the individual necessarily, but maybe with their team.
Correct.
Be able to lead that, that particular type of mindset within the group. You know, Orange is a great place, you know, live here, worked here, et cetera. I think that's important. A challenge has been, you know, where folks on one side and folks on the other side may not have the same resources, or at least they feel as if they don't have the same resources. And I think that maybe that, that confluence needs to be made so that people know there are things that are unique on both sides. One does not have something that the other may not necessarily have, even though, you know, something's been created here 75 years ago versus something that's been built 50 years ago, and it seems like it's nothing, but it's something. So we have to really embrace those, those differences, but to be more equitable within the context of how our community is situated. And, and let me see, challenges, you know, I think that's, that's part of the challenge, so that's, that's all. I think I hit everything.
Yeah, and...
One, one more thing, I'm sorry. I will say I feel like bilingual, being bilingual in Spanish in particular is important to me, and I think that as an individual, as a parent in the district, that's important. It's important to the parents that are on my side of, of this particular district, and I think that will be beneficial. It doesn't hurt to have more language, so I think that's important, bilingual and belligerent.
Yeah, no, it's certainly an asset. And Mr. Glass brought up the superintendent-board relations and how critical, important that is. I often reflect back, and Peggy knows this, it's the closest thing to a marriage that I ever encountered, and I've been married for 52 years, as I twitch here a little bit here, but my point is, those are all relevant and extremely important. Yeah, thank you. Ms. Vane?
So a lot has been said, but I will go through and reiterate and underscore, you know, what I feel might be the most important. I agree that we need someone that we can have confidence in, and the community can have confidence in, that can earn and maintain the trust of our district, and related to that is listening. I also feel that we need someone with a strong financial background, maybe a business background, and I also feel that academic achievement and a doctorate, not necessarily an EDD, but also a PhD, might be preferred. This person will be someone that is the face of the district. In terms of skill, project management, strategic planning, so having goals, but then also kind of those micro-level goals and helping us understand, you know, how we can get to those goals. I would appreciate when we use the language of track record, that we have some data to support that, or, you know, proven in the way that we can measure, you know, these sorts of outcomes. And so, relatedly, I think that one of the things that I would appreciate in a track record is, again, academic achievement and someone that can move the needle on those things like reading and math and graduation. And in terms of diversity, I don't think anyone's mentioned special education, and so we have some robust programs in that department, and I would be glad to learn about people's experience in that regard. And we also, everyone has mentioned the diversity of our district, but also we serve many different cities, and so thinking about the relationship that, you know, the district might have with these other entities, other cities and other relationships that also serve the people, the same people that we serve, I think would be helpful to know. In terms of strength of our district, we, as many have said, we have a very rich history, and people come here and stay here, but also we have open enrollment, and not all places have that, so I think it might be helpful to find out and think about, you know, how this person would manage that part of our district. Sarah had mentioned experience, and so I think that that can come in a lot of different forms. I'm also open to that. And, yeah, I think that's all I've got to add. Thank you.
Other things that might come to mind that have, that you'd like to reflect upon?
I'll echo the, that bilingual is a, being bilingual is definitely an asset, and their educational background is an asset. I mean, it's not a deal breaker, but I do think that having that appreciation and knowledge of a community such as ours, they, I, I want to see that kind of experience in a district that is similar to ours.
Yes, yeah.
Demographically.
Yeah. Very often we hear that, have they had experience in a very similar district accordingly with respect to the demographics, the size, that type of thing, you know? Other things that might come to mind?
Now, I, I talk to a lot of parents in the district. Some of them feel very comfortable talking to me, and aside from athletics, I hear that a lot. Parents, I think it's important for us to prioritize somebody who prioritizes academic achievement and, and focuses on the diverse needs of our students and are willing to provide the supports to achieve that. I feel like sometimes our, our parents don't feel like they're supported enough, and I think that's important for our community.
Yeah. Yeah, obviously, many, many challenges on the horizon, regardless of the district, you know, that you as a board and trustee members are going to face, and certainly as the leaders are going to face in the immediate future.
I definitely would like to, I would like to know how familiar candidates are with our district as well. I think that it's important that people do know the background of our district, because we do have, we have a long history here, some, some good, very good, and some not as good, and I think that it's important that whoever comes here understands and at least has some knowledge of our district, you know?
Absolutely true, yeah. No doubt about it.
I, I'm working with a group of aspiring superintendents. I'm doing four sessions with them this year from, they're kind of from all over, from Southern California. It's been really, it's been wonderful, frankly, it's really exciting. And one of the things we talk about is how do you go through the process as a candidate? For, for me personally, over the years, what I've said to people is, while we work for the board and, and that's our major role, obviously, I also know that candidates like going through our process. They trust us to be confidential, they trust us to build good relationships, and we want them to have a good experience, because only one person gets the job, right? And yet, everybody has to go through all of this, and it's, it's a lot of work for them, but one of the things that's important is that they really do their homework and, and really understand what the history of the district is. They can watch your board meetings over a period of time, they can see different things. So we really want them to have done their serious homework about, and does, do the values here match what they are, right? Because it isn't just, it isn't just the superintendent's job, it isn't that you got the superintendency, it's about, are we going to be able to work together well to help kids in the district? I mean, that's really what this is really about for us. So it really, we want them to do their homework. That's why this, the input part for us is really informative. It takes a lot of time, it's very, you know, you do a lot of typing and all those kinds of things. But we also get a lot of context about, you probably, some people said, well, don't you, everybody always tell you the same characteristics? Well, yeah, there's a lot of them. We want honesty, transparency, good communicator, those kinds of things. But it's also about what's the context you're coming into as a superintendent? What's the place like in terms of where they are, where they want to be? And that's so important to understand. And that, all those input sessions really help us understand that better. And when we're talking to candidates, we can say that, you know. I worked with the district years ago, and I tell the story only because there was a gentleman, I knew very, I knew him, and he was applied for a job. And he never contacted me, he never reached out to me about the job. And they had, were very specific in the district. They had to have somebody who'd been a high school principal. He'd never been a high school principal. They weren't going to hire him, but he never, and it's a lot of work to put it together if you're not really a candidate, right? And so that's part of what we get in saying, so if somebody says to me, I really want this job, and everybody has said they have to have had K-12 experience. They can't just be an elementary person, they can't just be a high school person. They have to have some K-12. Then, and you've only been an elementary principal, you're not a good candidate. So that's part of why this is so important to us.
With that being said, does anybody have any sort of deal breakers? Or are we all pretty open to specific people? Or do you feel strongly about one thing or another?
And if I may, one of the opportunities is to contact us directly. You have Peggy and my cards there at the table at the dais. And certainly feel free to contact us next week, this weekend, whatever the case might be, should you have some added information that is important for us to put down and contemplate. And then one of the last things I'll say is just that, once we begin to formulate the questions for the interview, much of that will be based on what we've heard. You know, tell us a little bit more how you have communicated effectively in the form of writing and speaking and so on with your public accordingly. What kind of bond referendum experience have you had with facilities and modernization and so on? What type of fiscal aspects of things have you dealt with, challenges perhaps? So those questions ultimately will be really aligned with what those things that we are hearing from, not only the board, but also the balance of stakeholders.
I think the last thing we have to really get to is the survey, because we have not done that. Dennis, I don't know if you want to take that one, or you want one of us to do it?
Hold on, I think Trustee Glass had a comment.
One more quality. I think experience working with unions is probably important as well.
So we've mentioned communication a lot, but I would also add writing in particular. I know sometimes for academic jobs, you come in and you, either you present a writing sample or you actually do write in interviews. So I think someone with strong written capacity is very important.
Perfect. And once you're able to see those applications that we will provide you, all of the applications, and you read into those introductory letters, those statements, if you will, within the application process, you'll really begin to kind of get a sense of the strengths and the weaknesses. One of the facts is that we do so many searches in the state of California. This is going to sound a little odd, maybe a little assertive, is we know who has baggage. And we want to protect you from those individuals as well.
Do you have the survey?
I do not have the survey printed, no.
Okay, we need to make a little bit of time on the survey. I don't have a copy of Dennis' of the survey in front of me directly, but do you want to talk a little bit about that? You'll get to us the language as you want, of course.
Does the board have the survey in front of them?
Yes, they have a paper copy of it. I have it online, Dennis.
So maybe, let's just take it and take a look at it. We found that the survey is broad enough to capture, the survey goes to students, teachers, classified, parents, community members. And so there's a part there of sort of ranking characteristics that you like. But you'll notice too, there's sections in there that are the exact same things, whether the challenges facing the district, whether the strengths of the district, and what are you looking for. And so that coincides with the types of things that you've talked about tonight. So as you look at that survey, is there anything that you think we've left off? We've used this for many, many, many times, and it's brought us pretty good results. But there may be some tweaking that you would like to have us consider in that.
And those results have been really high volume as a result of the survey being applied and available on your website as well. And us determining whether or not we need to push it further. So we will continue to check on the survey results, the amount of survey coming in. And then in turn, should we have to push it out a little bit more, communicate to your public, and remind them accordingly, we can certainly do that as well.
In some cases too, and I don't know that you have, want to do this, but in some cases, the city will put stuff on their website as a link for this, or encouraging people to do the survey. So broader community can see that what's going on as well. And they just link onto your website to do the survey. You don't see the results, we do first, and we get all that.
And it's an interesting phenomenon in that post-COVID, people have preferred surveys. We suspect we're going to be in the thousands here in Orange Unified.
We think so, and it'll be a volume of data, but we have a way of breaking it down. We have an executive summary. And also then, you'll actually see everything. We redact a few things if they're inappropriate, but you actually see everything. And it'll be very helpful, but the executive summary probably gives you the best sense of how the community's feeling. And then you kind of balance that off with what we've done with our one-on-ones, when we met in those Zoom meetings. So you can take a little time, you don't have to decide tonight, but if there's anything that you think that we've left off or that you want tweaked, let us know. We can't change a tremendous amount, but if there's something there that you think you'd like to see differently, or like to have us handle it differently, do let us know, but we'll probably get 1,500 to 2,000 responses. And as Dr. Verduco said, that's grown each year, each day. Each search we do, there's more and more response to the survey.
Do, I just have a quick question on, related to what Trustee Glass had asked earlier. Is there any way to tell where the responses are deriving from? Or, you know, how do we have the ability to understand that this is a, really a district-wide response to the survey? As opposed to, you know, a thousand families in a square mile?
That's a good question. We break it down, obviously, by groups. I think I can remember a survey where we had, not trustee areas, but we had sort of general areas where, and maybe we could think about that.
Like high school attendance area?
And you'd have to help us a little bit, because are there, what you mean by saying, what would be a general area? They may not know trustee areas, but, or maybe it's high school district. You know, which high school area do you come from? Can we get some of your thinking on that? If, I don't know that we can do it, but we'd like to hear what your thoughts might be on that.
Okay. Is your thought on that, Trustee Vane? Okay, no. So I think high school district seems like it might be, at least narrow it down a little bit. Trustee Glass?
Well, we have mechanisms where we ask for people to give feedback throughout the district. And so the question is, what do we do to ensure that we're getting a nice cross-section of information?
Right, but the?
I think she's asking if whether, how we can break the responses out by some demographic area, geographic area, and maybe the high, we can look at how that might work.
Like on the my perspectives portion?
Perhaps, if not even the responses, we can certainly see the volume, perhaps, of responses that came by the, let's just say, the various, I think you have four high schools, whatever the high school attendance zones are, they could check that. So that would give a good sense of the volume of responses that you received.
Right, on the my perspectives come from being, and then have boxes that say what attendance area maybe they live in? Yeah.
I was going to suggest just self-selection by an individual, similar to what we have, where we're asking people to take a moment to identify who they are from perspective. We may be able to do the same thing with trustee area or attendance area, or something of that nature. It wouldn't be foolproof, but it would be at least something that we could?
How knowledgeable in general are people of which trustee area they're in?
That's the question I was going to ask, even with just selecting their high school. So we have, you know, kindergarten students, and we're in open district. So I think if?
Or is it by residential, like residential area or residential around the high school, and we could list the high schools?
Can they fill in zip code?
Let us look at maybe what that options would be and?
That's interesting. Would that help in Orange?
In Orange Unified, I think it does, because we have so many different communities. And we definitely want to make sure that we're getting a good cross-section of the entire district.
Because even city might not break it down enough. Orange is huge, I mean, now maybe Card and Grill. I'm just thinking, a random community member that maybe wants to fill this out would have no idea. If they don't have kids, they may not have any idea where the high school.
My suggestion is to add an, you know, unknown, yeah. Not sure, something, you know.
But is it?
They can check that box as opposed to a high school attendance area.
Right, and we may need to have an option, people may not want to put their zip code, so that's fine, you know.
Those people know what their nearest high school is. We could say, your nearest high school, fill in, I don't know.
Let us look at what those?
I like the zip code idea.
But what Ms. Perry mentioned about their willingness to do that, we might be creating some minor anxiety as well when you relate to questions regarding their residence in their area.
You could say decline to state also.
Well, I heard, I heard three things that we can pursue. Zip code is a possibility. What's, where's your nearest high school? And then, I don't know, or don't want to answer, you know, I don't, unknown, or no response.
And I jotted that down, so we'll work on that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We try to, and we have to figure out what we can do in that regard, but we'll, we'll work on that.
Thank you. Trustee Vane had a comment or question on the survey, I believe.
Yeah, so I think we all really appreciate your experience and are glad to have you helping us out with this. And one of my questions is, when you provide the executive summary and when you let us know, like kind of when we're going along the way, how many applicants we have, do you also provide a sense of norms for us? Like typically, you know, X amount of parents check the box, or, you know, we should broaden out until approximately this, or, you know, in a normal, and I know all the districts are very different, but for me, it would be helpful to have some sense of that. And there may be statewide norms or national norms, I'm not sure.
We try to figure out roughly, you know, kind of in compar, we've done districts similar size. What's their response rate typically? And usually typically, the parents and staff are your biggest participants. Obviously, community members too, but biggest are really parents and staff. And we break it up by classified versus certificated, so we have kind of that breakdown. But we try to compare it too, to what other districts of similar size are. And if partway through, as I think Dr. Verduco mentioned, we feel like we don't have as much response as we need, we might push that more. We might ask you to send out another blast. Typically around, whatever the deadline is, a few days before, we'll ask the district, send out another blast announcement. Reminder, deadline for participation in the survey for superintendent is this. And then that usually picks that up a little bit. We don't, since we're doing it before they, you know, winter break or, you know, spring break or any of that, we should be able to find in terms of getting the communication out.
And even when our personal meetings take place, typically the end conversation is a reminder to have their constituents, the people that they're most associated with. So if I'm talking to the classified union executive group, I'm reminding them, please tell your members to look at that survey and complete that survey accordingly. So we're always pushing that.
And principals can be very helpful with parental and student involvement. So that would be another way to push.
And so there's some quantitative questions, but there's more qualitative questions. So I kind of asked this a little bit earlier. How do we receive that, in a typology, or keywords, or just the raw data?
You're going to, different ways, you're going to get all the raw data, you're going to get everything. But you're also going to have graphs that show things. Like this, this particular characteristic is the highest. You're going to see those breakouts on a graph, as well as all the verbiage that will come with it. So it's a combination of things. And then the executive summary gives you the, here's how, what's the percentage of parents, what's those kinds of things, we'll break that all out for you. So you're going to see it in different formats. The raw data's interesting, it's just a lot to read. But I think personally, for me, I know, I mean, we do a lot with the executive summary, but the comment part is pretty interesting. And that part tells you a lot.
Thank you.
That help?
And Trustee Vane, we also then, in that executive summary, we try to pull out those themes that recur over and over and over again for the trustees to look at and to examine. So I think between the different ways it's collected, you get a pretty, pretty good sense of how people are feeling and what's important to the community, and students and teachers. And going back to what Dr. Lynn said, teachers are very strong reporters on the survey. And then as our, as our parents. And between, you know, the principals and Mr. Christensen, really pushing that out, and we have, if you have marquees or those phone messages, goes a long, long ways to getting very strong responses.
So for example, your parent square, or whatever the communication aspect is that you have available to you, those reminders help a great deal.
So do your parent leaders. Whether you have PTA councils, those kinds of things, they're also a great resource for getting that information out.
I had just a quick thought too, going back to the high school attendance area, whatever. If we have a declined to state, but maybe also a not applicable, because there are going to be teachers who don't live in the district that are going to be filling this out. I just kind of thought maybe?
Oh, that's good.
Have a couple of different options for the non-answer, you know, because they may feel like, well, I'm not declining to state, I just don't live here. And then, yeah, I agree, we, we need to figure out kind of the message to principals, the school messengers, the phone messages that go out, the newsletters, all the different ways this can be blasted out. They're used to doing surveys, but this one is a much, I would say, more intentional, focused, not as much time as we do with some of our other surveys. Really need to make sure we're consistent in how we get that out.
Right, good. Can I just add to that, that it needs to be, yes, consistent, but also really clear and concise? The message has to be to the point, whether it's just various points, not even a paragraph. Like even the introductory paragraph in the survey is a lot of verbiage for a lot of our parents, that they'll just skim through it. We want to make sure that they're intentional with a lot that they're responding to. So I think that's just one of my concerns when I look at the vocabulary that's being used here. If I'm thinking I'm a parent and I may not know what some of this language means. There is one, let me see if I can find it. Like experience in transformation and school turnaround. Like if I was a parent not in education, I have no idea what that means.
Right.
Yeah.
Really good point.
This will take approximately, you know, how many minutes or whatever, so people know what they're getting into when they click on it.
I have a question about the, that, right here, it says it's an online survey. And I want to make sure that we're able to reach parents who may not have access to technology, or they may not know how to use technology. Or I know the surveys will be given in hopefully multiple language, but how do we ensure, you know, if, like, there are people out there who just don't know how to use technology?
We've done a couple, yeah, I've done a couple of things. Sometimes schools will open their library, so parents can go into the school library where they come to, you know, they might be coming there anyhow at some point, so there's other ways. But sometimes I think about your family resource center, some of the centers where parents might be more involved.
Are there any options to do a paper survey for some of the parents, or not really?
It's kind of hard then to get all that data the way you'd want it. But I think if we could think about other places they could go to get the input?
Obviously, online is the preferred way to do it. But I didn't want to just lock out parents or families who weren't comfortable doing it online because they didn't know how to use the computers, to have an option to take it.
We can think about how we might do that to really gather that data, but it might be a little tougher timeline for them, just to get the input on time.
Okay.
There's potentially a way, let us think about how we could do it. Maybe printing some copies for schools? But that becomes a little tricky and getting the data back.
Peggy, as you said, we've had good luck with certain schools setting up a computer or two in the library where it's known that they can, a parent can go in there and complete the survey.
Okay. It could be that your DLEC makes some ways to do some things. It could be that your D-LAC makes some ways to do some things too.
Okay.
But going back to Ms.-
I think it's important for us to think about that part of it because how, how do we do the LCAP? Is it just online only?
We'll have, sometimes sites will have at ELEC meetings or PTA meetings or just in the front office. If they have an office manager, someone who can help them in Spanish, they'll have computers available for them to do. They do it with enrollment, filling out emergency cards, all of that kind of stuff that they do online now. Anyway, everything's online, even if they bring in their phone and they help them with that. But maybe we just need to make sure that every site has somebody available. And if not, we have district staff that are available on certain days or have something open at the district or different sites. Maybe if we're going out to the sites anyway, that's a time that they could have someone there when you do your info sessions, wherever those may be, maybe we have someone there available to help them with the surveys.
And back to Ms. Page's point about that language in the survey itself, we might want to customize the website information introducing the, the survey as well as encouraging them to, to do that. I know in terms of the personal meetings that we deal with, it's very often that I deal with the D-LAC groups. And so that has tended to grow and grow, at least my experience. We recently did a, a superintendent search and the, the entire room was just filled with D-LAC members. It was kind of cute, the one D-LAC member simply raised her hand and said, in Spanish, we just want somebody young and handsome. Poben y wapo. And so we really do go deep with our D-LAC folks accordingly.
Quick question. Is it typical that the results of all of this are also put online or something for the community to see?
It's been done different ways, it kind of depends and we would work with the district on that. Sometimes they just want to publish the executive summary. Sometimes they want to just use the position description that's approved, which is pretty general. But it's, gives people kind of a summary of what everybody's been thinking. So we'd have to look at different ways that you would do it.
I'd like to be, as we're sharing with people that this opportunity exists, I'd like to also be able to follow up with them and say, you know, and here's what you can expect in terms of, you know?
That executive summary is a, is a real good instrument for, it's almost a roadmap for the immediate future with respect to. It's like a WASC accreditation process. And alongside a 90-day plan or 100-day plan in conjunction with the board, that's going to make a big difference as well. It's a helpful tool.
I have another question regarding the translation. Well, when we have it translated, let's say, Spanish or hopefully other languages, how is that checked to make sure, like trustee Page brought up, transformation and school turnaround, how does that translate in Spanish? Excuse me, you know, we need to make sure it's, it makes sense because some things don't translate literally. So I just want to make sure somebody is really checking that to make sure it's, it's-
And Ms. Perry, I, I put that down on one of my personal notes to refer to as with our executive assistants.
And, and there is a Spanish translation also that was provided. It's in the agenda. So I, not that I'm any good at this, but, you know, so people that you know that can review it might say, yes, it's fine or it's not. I mean, Mr. Dr. Verduco may have reviewed it already, so.
I did take, I looked at our survey and I made some recommendations to the survey. So I can present that to you or I can present it to the president and she can distribute it. And I know that it's, I guess, maybe right now a draft. But there's some things I put in here that complement some of the strengths, challenges, qualities that we'd like, that I think that we should look for and ask the community with regards to what we're looking for, for a new leader. So I just wanted to share that.
All right. I think we have everything done that we need right now.
Okay, well, there's a lot going on. So obviously, in terms of board members reaching out to you to give you names of people that they want you to contact, they just reach out to you directly, I'm assuming?
There's a couple of ways you could do it. If you, if you have some specific people that you think we should invite to a specific meeting, then maybe that should go to Karen. And then we'll work with Karen on developing the agenda. We have time, we have sample formats for all the scheduling of all that, it's a little tricky. This is the part where Karen gets pretty busy, is setting up those meetings.
I was actually talking about candidates though, for superintendents.
Oh, candidates, yes, yes, absolutely.
I would suggest you contact us directly, should you have somebody in mind that you'd like to-
And each of us separately, because obviously we're not sharing that information. So everybody has a card, so if you have people that you want them to contact, you need to contact them directly. Contact you directly with maybe the survey suggestion. I think that would be appropriate to go directly. Anything else that would be direct? Otherwise, it would go to Karen for the most part, or, or me if it was somewhat generic.
But just to reiterate, Madam President, again, should you have somebody in mind that you'd like us to speak to and reach out to, there are some protocols relating to that, some aspects of that as it relates to how long they've been in a certain district or to what degree have we made previous contact, their interest and so on. But that, that conversation, those conversations can and should take place directly with us and then we in turn with them.
Right, okay. And obviously, we, maybe you can remind the board or tell us, you know, our role, we need to make sure we're, we know what the rules are when it comes to communicating with anybody who might be a candidate. If you could please review that for us, that would be great.
It's very important that, that if you have somebody you, that if anybody, first of all, there, we say on our form, they should not have contact with board members. That's, that's, we feel that's a breach of protocol, that they should, if they have any questions, they contact us. If somebody says to you, a parent walks up and says, I think we should do this, you just say, you tell them you'll pass the information on to us. It's really important, you know, some of these people are in jobs that if, that gets public that they're looking, it gets a little complicated for them and we don't want to put anybody at risk. So the high, higher level of confidentiality that we have. But anytime if you hear something and you want to talk with us, just call us.
Okay, does anybody have any follow-up questions to that? All right.
I, I just, one, one question on communications. If Karen could probably put the best emails and cell numbers of board members and then we would have our best email and cell and then we could circulate that amongst ourselves. So we know, what's the best way to contact you and you to contact us?
Great, okay. We can do that, all right. Well, this was really productive, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And am I correct, the next date that we're all together is March 22nd? And that's to go over the candidates and choose the ones that we're going to interview. So in the meantime, we'll be communicating in other ways.
Right.
Right. You can expect updates accordingly every other week perhaps, that type of thing.
Sorry, there's a bug that just keeps flying around me.
Thank you very much for your time, it'll be, it'll be a good search.
Okay, thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 5:59.